The Board Curriculum Committee to order. The committee would like to welcome the audience. Viewers may watch live Board Committee meetings online at TCAPS.net/Board. Recorded meetings may be viewed on demand at the same address. The committee has set aside this time for public comment, but as there are no members in the audience, I believe we are good to go. Moving on to procedural items. First up, we have our draft committee meeting minutes from July 29, 2025. Trustee's pack or Bajeris, any changes from you?
Nope.
I just saw one typo under number four informational items. A, I think they're the date for the education responsive steps and district data was from 2024 to 2025. There's just a one-digit typo and a number there. All right, just call me eagle eyes. I think with that change, we're good to move the draft. We'll just, the minutes will remain as posted with that one small revision. Okay. All right then, moving on to the 2025 to 2026 TCAPS District Course Catalog update. I'll let Ms. Houghton speak to that.
Yeah, I'm kind of surprised by this one. We don't have any changes, and I'm only surprised because typically this year, this time of year, we will, but we might still next month. But right now, we stand, we did, you know, look forward a lot. We knew we were going to launch some middle school programs. We had a lot of those courses this past spring. We knew we were starting a new AP Research course that we'd already gotten in this last spring, too. So at this moment, there's no changes or additions for us.
So I just have a question. If a kid goes to their counselor, like I can definitely predict this happening at the high school level, maybe middle school, and they want to take something virtual and from Michigan Virtual, for example, and we don't currently operate, could that, that would be the other September?
It probably will happen with Michigan Virtual. Depending on kids' interests right now, it's sort of the student registration and NMC courses. Those are the other things you'll probably see next month. New ones of those that students are now interested in or are now available for students, and we'll need to add those. But at this moment, zero.
Okay. All right then, consistent with our practice, we'll put that on the consent calendar at the next full board meeting as usual. Okay, moving on to our learning series, always the centerpiece of our curriculum committee meetings, the professional learning opening the school year. Ms. Houghton and Mr. Tiesworth.
Thank you. Just several different items to go through that we've been working on over the summer about professional learning. But just to reiterate, you know, we had the EA here in the spring, and we talked about our professional learning and how Jesse and I always approach and Brittany approach our professional learning meaningful and relevant. Just in the 28, 29 years we've been at TCAPS, we've had some meaningful, relevant, and at times maybe some professional development that wasn't. And so we always have that filter to make sure if we're going to take people's time to sit in front of us and learn, we want to make sure it's something they can take, right? It's really nice if they can take it away and use it immediately, but whether or not there's some scope and sequence to it. So as we go through our summer professional learning, or when our APs get back, or principals get back, just that, you know, we have a lot of people in front of us besides teachers, like I said, administrators, and every single one of them is in front of us, we try to filter through that.
Yeah, so here are some highlights of some summer work that our teachers have done. A lot of people think teachers have the summer off, but a lot of our individuals are out there gaining new information. We sent about, I think we sent 11 of our secondary teachers to different AP trainings this summer due to a couple reasons. We had an increase in our AP environmental courses at both high schools, an increase in AP seminar at both high schools. We're adding some teachers there, and then we're adding, of course, the AP Research. And then we've just had some retirements and some turnovers, a change in AP World at Central, for example, as we had a retirement there, a change in AP Computer Science. So 11 of our teachers, and that's a pretty intense training. They go away for a full week and engage in that, but it's done by College Board and always done to a great standard. It's one of the requirements when we offer AP. Then we have a great partnership with North Ed. They host our CPM. CPM is the curriculum we use for secondary math, so from sixth grade all the way through Algebra II. So they actually host a regional training here, which is awesome because it's here in town, and we offer that to any of our new hires. So and some of our returning staff who's maybe changed preps or feel like they want to brush up on that. They've got some folks coming in from the National CPM Group. So I know I was just signing some time sheets this morning. We had a couple of our new hires able to attend that and feel like they're really ready to launch into this next school year. We had the MASSP conference that's at the resort. Dr. Van Wagner, myself, Mr. Esper, and Mr. Berger actually presented at that conference. But that's a great conference, hundreds of administrators from around the state. It's a three-day conference, so we sent a good group of our secondary principals to that.
Who was presented on the, was it project-based learning?
We presented on just the way we've redesigned our high schools and tried to infuse some flexibility into the, into the school day. We talked about TIE, the TIE programs at both sides, and then we talked about the academic communities, too. So really thinking about how are we, and it was a well-attended session, and since then, too, we've had lots of schools reach out and either want to come visit or get some more information or share and swap ideas. So it was pretty cool.
Anything on the manufacturing centers in your presentation?
We showed a picture of them, and we talked about their connection to the STEM Academy, but that was, that was about that. Yeah, it really was around the curricular pieces of it, but yeah.
The, you know, what we had done while it was elementary, we were just getting rolling our summer camp for the elementary STEM. Yeah, you know, it's even, so there's a good article that's actually out, I think yesterday, in one of the local newspapers that are distributed for free in the community, and the name slipped in me at the moment. And we talked about, you know, we didn't get occupancy until early May, you know, so we only had a little small chunk of last school year that we were even in them. So talked about this will be our first full year, actually being able to plan, and so that'll be exciting to see what we can begin to build with partnerships and that, so.
Yeah, great. Thank you. Yeah. I'm just curious about MASSP. Do they, how often do they come to the Grand Traverse Resort for their?
Every year. That's their big once a year, and I mean, it is big. I mean, it is, I mean, you would bore 400 principal. I mean, it's everybody in the state and their assistants and athlete. I mean, it's Secondary Principals Association, and Wendy Zebb, who runs that, does a phenomenal job. They bring in great speakers and breakout sessions, and yeah, it's definitely the conference to go to in the state if you're a secondary building administrator.
Terrific. It sounds like the MASB, which goes back and forth between the Grand Traverse Resort and the Lansing Convention Center. Every two years, they swap back and forth. But anyway, thank you for highlighting the district's efforts. I think that's really, you know, it's important because it gives Traverse City some recognition statewide, and it grows your network, and yeah, that's just very fruitful. So thank you for taking that initiative.
Absolutely. And then I'll let Brittany talk a little bit about some of the work our elementary has done over the summer, and then the book club.
Yes. So Jonathan Swiegles represented the Elementary Principals Group and attended the Explicit Instruction Academy. So MIMTSS generally works to bring in Anita Archer in person to run a week-long kind of comprehensive training course regarding, you know, all the elements tied to the work she's done with explicit instruction. And so his work is going to be bringing that learning back to the Elementary Principals Group when we meet on a monthly basis. We did our two program overviews for our K2 CKLA program overview, as well as the 3-5 that occurred the Thursday and Friday after school got out, and that was well-attended. I believe, Dan, we had over 100 participants who came. We maxed out each of our four sessions across the board, which was great as that kind of worked to not only build a foundation of understanding with regards to how CKLA is built and connects to the work that we've done surrounding the science of reading, but also eased some sort of anxiety heading into the summer to kind of be able to start to plan what that might look like ahead of them formally coming back tomorrow, essentially. And then we had our elementary district math team really work intentionally on their scope and sequence for the course of this year, primarily making some explicit links to the work that the district did with kind of recalibrating our understanding on math fluency and what it means to actually be fluent with our facts. So really making sure that teachers see that direct connection between best practice and math instruction, as well as their core curricular resource method expressions. And then the last professional learning we wanted to highlight was we did a K5 Summer Book Club surrounding Natalie Wexler's The Knowledge Gap. We had 39, roughly 39 elementary teachers, principals, and support staff sign up to participate in that book study. We took the structure that Andy Phillips has done with his staff in the past at Quartade and really scaled it up at a district level to really provide, I think, some more differentiated opportunity to kind of build on the learning that they engaged in with the Reading League Partnership last year. And so the premise of The Knowledge Gap is to really highlight the importance of building students' background knowledge through a coherent, knowledge-rich curriculum. So really adding into that understanding before they come to implement, or before they start to implement CKLA this fall.
Can you give me an example of what sorts of things you would have been, they would have been looking at? In particular supplementary, supplementary material for CKLA or?
No, this is, this is more building kind of their collective understanding and the importance of building background knowledge, so more about the research that's been done, highlighting the importance of background knowledge, not necessarily additional materials to bring into their implementation, but understanding the why and purpose and intent of why CKLA is built the way it is.
So basically, the theory of instruction.
Correct. Absolutely.
Yeah, that's one of our mantras this year is we don't supplement anything in CKLA. We're going to try to gather some, some input as the year goes on on where they think they should, and if there's something we need to supplement, then we do it all together and we structure it. But right now, that's kind of what got, with Journeys, what got away from us, is there was no structure with how people supplemented, and pretty soon after a few years, they're not even doing the curriculum anymore. So, you know, with the curriculum base in science of reading, we're really trying to drive home with principals and teachers that we stick with the curriculum. If you want to supplement, let's keep track of that through the year, and then at some point, if we find something specifically that the curriculum has weakened, Brittany and I can kind of have a, have a strategy around how to, how to supplement.
What about diverse books and, and information out there? I mean, classic literature, if it's not included in CKLA, you're basically going to pass by it.
Well, I think it's scope and sequence. So Brittany can talk specifically about how that looks, but each, you know, each teacher kit comes with a set of readers for each unit, and there's 10 units. So everyone has approximately 10 readers to start with. And then the novel kits, Brittany start, was it fourth and fifth?
Third, fourth, and fifth. Each have a unit that is pertinent to a novel study. So in third grade, it's Stella Diaz. In fourth grade, it is The Season of Stix Malone, and then in fifth grade, it's The Science of Unbreakable Things. So they have an entire unit that is dedicated to actually reading and engaging in rich literature.
Yeah, it'd be interesting to see some of that, you know, because that's, I was reading, that's when I started becoming an active reader, and I read everything. I mean, there was not one topic area that was the sole focus.
Right. And we have been working with Stephanie Light, who has been a really great resource to make connections between CKLA outlines and preselects trade books that are actually, they have a lot of Caldecott winners and other kind of well-renowned children's books.
New berries as they get older.
That, too, yes. And so they've taken a list of trade books and have made direct links to the topics that students will be studying across the course of their, you know, grade level curriculum. And so Steffi has been working with us to partner, how do we bring those rich texts into our libraries as well, that not only teachers can go in and check out and bring into their classroom through Read Alouds, but also that kids will have that connected experience with Read Alouds when they go to library once a week as well.
Yeah, it'd be real interesting to kind of learn more.
Brittany, do you mind if we go back one slide? I want to just ask about, big picture here, what, if any, curriculum materials are up for renewal or reevaluation this year? If, off the top of your head, I know this isn't something you prepared talking about, but just to give some heads up.
Just for elementary, there's not. So if I just go through four core, right? Social Studies were in year three of using those, the magazines for upper and lower L, and in science, we sell our FOS kits, right? We were using our FOS kits and continuing to do that. Math Expressions, I think, is on year five of eight. So that's on the back of our mind now, starting that process of probably the year after next, is to start looking at pilot and different programming. And then in CKLA, we just started.
Yeah, for secondary, so CPM is our math curriculum, you know, from sixth grade all the way through Algebra II. We made a slight adjustment at eighth grade, still stayed within the CPM umbrella products, but we moved from what was called the IC back to the CC3. That was before we saw the data that we had seen, but that was based a lot on teacher feedback and responses and classroom visits we had done. And that's locked in until 2028, I want to say. And then my perspectives is our ELA all the way through 611 as well, and that's locked in. Their social studies doesn't have, I would, doesn't have a defined curriculum, so to say, through, but what they're using a lot of is what's called DBQ questioning. They actually have a trainer coming in on Wednesday to work with them. The high schools have used these a lot in their courses, and then they really want to kind of push them down to the middle schools. How do you read right with evidence and communicate with evidence? And it, that's really, social studies is moving a lot towards like versus teaching topics to teaching skills. You can't really cover all of history, right? And so how do you cover historical events and make connections between different historical events? How do you, say, we've learned this during World War I, which then influenced these policies, right? Some of that type of connections. So that DBQ project is probably, I know it's going to extend down to sixth grade this next year. And then for science, the middle school science curriculum is up at the end of this year. So that's the one that we need to look at, and the science team knows that. Again, we do not have a 612 science curriculum. A lot of it has to do with the way their standards, with the NGSS standards are rolling out. They've got a trainer coming in, I'm jumping ahead on some slides here, but on Wednesday as well, working a lot on, the way the science standards work is one standard sort of runs all the way through all of our science classes, and so they're looking at taking those standards and thinking about what does it mean to be a sixth grader, seventh grader, ninth and tenth grader throughout this strand of skill or knowledge. So they're doing, we call it like some vertical cohesion mapping and stuff on Wednesday, so. But middle school science, I expect to see. And then there's a couple APs, like AP Chem is up for, is expiring this year, and AP, there's one more that they told us it was the last year. I want to say it's Bio, but that makes me feel like it's all science, and I can't, I can't remember off the top of my head. But those are smaller, because those would be a smaller subset.
So on the science one, when you said there's no, there are no standards, grade six through 12, you mean state-level standards?
No, 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 there are standards, the National Next Generation Science Standards. They're just very, they're, they're different than the way math and ELA standards are written.
It just, those standards are more sequential and in kind of skill-based, especially we talk about math standards, but as far as science goes, it's the same thing as elementary. You know, they don't have one standard that we're going to learn this in kindergarten, and then we're going to learn this in first grade. It's the same standards as Jesse was saying, K5, but then how complex and deep you get into each standard. So they might talk about planets in kindergarten, but it's not to the depths where they talk about planets in fifth grade. But it's the same idea the standards go through.
Okay. And then for the AP, how long do those textbooks usually get approved for? I know they're online now.
Yeah, usually they're six years. Anywhere from, like, we get a better price break the farther you go out, but then also you're married to something for longer, right? So there's like, you know, a ying and a yang with that. I would say the nice thing about AP is that, so College Board gives us a list of approved texts, right? For your course to be considered an AP course for transcripts and for such, you had to have had a teacher who went to training, you have to have a teacher who submits a syllabus to College Board, and it's approved. You have to, like, there's certain standards, and one of them is you have to use a text or a resource that's from their approved list. And so a lot of times, what you'll see is our teachers will like a text, our kids will perform well, and then they'll just kind of continue to renew it. And so then we'll try to stretch them out six or eight years. It gives us a better price break, to be honest, you know, so.
Great. Okay, so just to wrap this up, the, so the one that you said would, this middle school science would be up for evaluation at the end of this year, so you're not looking to evaluate or pilot it, anything this year would be like 2026 to 2027?
Maybe. I have to, that's like on our, on my.
Radar.
Yeah, like, we're going to get the team together and figure out, like, what's the plan. I could see us piloting some small units this spring or second semester, right? Grab some resources and get our hands into them and potentially do that. But we know at the end of this spring, the current resource we have, we will not have access to it any longer, so.
All right. We'll look forward to hearing those updates. And when you get the AP ones, even if they're up for renewal, I think it'd be beneficial for the curriculum committee to hear what the teacher's evaluation is. When you prepare that memo, I know with environmental sciences last summer, or maybe it was the spring, it went through.
Board Finance. I apologize. Yep, yep, I'll make sure it comes here and to Board Finance. No problem.
Great. It's helpful for us to have answer, you know, kids and parents' questions, too. So, and obviously, we've got an AP metric in our new strategic plan, so thank you. Okay.
One last thing on science. Science tends to change in some ways. There are basics, there are basics in science that you build on that are foundational, but a lot of interpretation begins to change in certain areas. It can be hard to stay abreast of some things if your main source is always referring back to a text that is a curriculum that goes for eight years, you know, so.
That is one benefit of the digital versions, is as things change, it changes versus a hard copy that's outdated the day it's printed, you know, so the digital ones do get.
Well, the digital, as soon as it gets printed, it starts.
That's probably true, but, but at least it can be changed quicker. Is, that is one benefit. And again, I think there are, people think benefits and not benefits, but that is one, I think, pro to the digital side, is that those kind of things, rewrites, errors that are in that print text, that element can be easily, you know, switched from that standpoint.
And does that also reduce the amount of books that they have to carry?
Yes, yes.
There's a, there's a lot of benefits, and actually, our kids have loudly told us they prefer the digital over carrying five textbooks.
They're heavy ones.
They're heavy. But also just the manual, checking them in and out to kids, ensuring that, you know, and then if you have a teenager who's all over the place, if they just have their Chromebook, they have access to everything they need right there, you know, so helps.
It's pretty, it's pretty funny at the back-to-school orientation. This last week, my kids went to the high school station to pick up textbooks, but there was nothing for them to pick up. It was like, how did you even have a stamp on that card that you went to that station?
Well, they just confirmed.
All digital.
So Deanna alluded to this. So early August, August 11th, we welcomed all of our administrators back. The majority of our principals, with the exception of our four leads, high school and middle school leads, are not year-round, so we welcomed them all back. We had a nice full ad team retreat that morning. We were in the Innovation Center over at Central High School. It was one of those really, really hot, sticky days, so we were very happy to be in a nice big space with good air circulation. We followed that up, Dan and Brittany and I, with leading the joint principals for a few hours, just going, going through some things with our team, setting the year, we're really, we've been focusing on feedback, what our feedback looks like to our teachers, to our staff, support staff all the way through, to our. support staff all the way through, to ourselves. What is, what's the science of what good feedback looks like? What does the research say? And then sort of calibrating with what, with what kind of feedback their cadence is at and looking at what they give. And so we're going to dig more into that this year too with the principals. And then Dan and I followed up those days with, meeting with our teacher leaders for each of our curriculum teams, secondary and elementary, to just sort of get our feet on the ground about, like, who are our new staff in our departments? What does our August PD look like, this week PD? And what are, maybe some needs and some pressing issues, so.
Yeah, it's nice to get the district curriculum teams, elementary and secondary, they meet every, the cores meet for elementary separately throughout the year, but twice a year, I know they've done it in the past, but we've kind of restarted it for elementary, getting them all together in the same room. Some of it's just calendaring, right, as far as the logistics goes, but also to get everybody kind of on the same page and those, you know, some cross-curricular connections that they can make throughout the departments.
And then we've already started welcoming some of our kids back to our campuses, more so at our secondary sites here, although I know we got some open houses going on tomorrow at our elementaries. But our fall sports, we're almost a month into fall sports, if you can believe that or not. Our marching band camps are off and running. It's always really cool to go listen to the drum lines, I love that. But, and then we, last week, we had our student registration days at all five of our secondary buildings, so those campuses were full with kids and parents and lots of good stuff going on there.
Yeah, and our elementaries, as Jesse said, their open houses start, majority of them are tomorrow after the teacher work day, and then there's a few that are scattered over the next few days. And then the kindergarten signing day, so this is traditionally, I think, we used to call it kindergarten roundup. We used to do this in the spring, but with all the growth that we see in kids, they decided to do it now during this time of year to more accurately assess where the kids are learning-wise, and especially with the JK at every single building, that's always an option that those kids can take advantage of if they need it.
So that's like for, would that be for last minute?
Well, no, it's everybody, I mean, at that point, you know, we, it's kind of mapped off the idea of like the sports signing day and that. And we have a backdrop for every school, like you see the TCAP one, and we have a desk and kids sign that they're signing up to that school. It's a really, really cool thing for parents and things to do. But with the JK, what happens is, is that we still have some parents that really don't understand what that is or know what that is. And so sometimes it gives us an opportunity to have a conversation with parents, and they recognize, oh, maybe my student could use, you know, or maybe they didn't have preschool, you know, they didn't have that. So it gives an opportunity for us to have that conversation versus walking in day one, and then a teacher assessing and beginning to have that conversation. So I think, like, we have one elementary that I know, I think, we had about six or seven families that ended up transitioning from kindergarten to junior kindergarten after learning about it. So, so that's what this day helps us do, and it's not after school's already started. And it's all kindergarten families, so we push our preschool kids up as far as power school rollover from grade to grade. But even then, those, those families also come to the signing days, and they go through stations as just far as, just quick assessments on, on some reading. They do like a PlayStation on how they get along with others, and because in kindergarten, right, we get them from all different backgrounds. Some of them might have been in preschool with us for two to three years. Some of them, this might be the first time that they're in, in school. So having kindergartners sometimes, like, by themselves, to families that feel, you know, not overwhelmed, it's a really, really good thing.
Not with every other kid and family member.
Big fifth graders, they're walking all over.
Exactly, it's, that's huge.
So in terms of the spring, what you used to have called Roundup, are you still doing something like that to try to drive in?
No, we do a, no, we have Family Night, so we, we do like a, so a Family Night for incoming kindergartners as part of, some people do as part of Carnival, or other, they try to hook it up to some other event they're having at the school. Sometimes it's our parent nights with, with our title school, as far as also, hey, if you have kids that are coming into kindergarten next year, this is a good opportunity to get in the building. It just starts to, you know, our AAs and our principals at the building level create these lists that are just ongoing for several months to give us the best possible count that we can have as far as staffing goes and other needs they need. Special Ed Tiffany Palmill works very closely with them also, because the more we get to know about our kindergarten, the less chance you have, you know, the student dropped off on the first day that we've never had eyes on. Like Dr. Wayne Wagner said, maybe they've never been in any type of structured school, and they just struggle with, with that structure and that adjustment.
Right. All right, well.
Sarah, you've probably seen it a few times.
Yeah. Okay, thank you for that update.
And then this is this week, so this is really exciting for, for our team and CNI. So we've got all of our teachers coming back to the buildings tomorrow. They have a two-hour building meeting tomorrow, but a lot of those have been, again, calibrated during our joint principals. What are some of that's more of a logistical? What are some of the things we go over every year to ensure we're all on the same page? And then our teachers have some work time tomorrow to get the classroom set up for our elementaries to prepare for that open house. And then Wednesday, the entire teaching staff is at Central High School for the entire day, and they are broken into either elementary or secondary, and then secondary are broken into their content areas for content-specific professional development. So for example, our math department is brought in somebody from the Building Thinking Classrooms, which is a text that we have been using, it's written by a professor from Canada, he's amazing. And it's on increasing engagement, increasing time to task, increasing transfer of math skills. So they've got a really phenomenal woman coming in, and she's going to work with all of our six, twelve math teachers on what does high-quality math-specific instruction look like? What are some challenges that they have together? Science is going to be working with the National Next Generation Science Standards and that progression of one standard throughout. ELA is working, they've got a presenter coming in to do some vocabulary work and some focus with them. And then Social Studies has the DBQ folks coming in to really think about, how do we do some evidence writing? What does it look like in sixth grade all the way through? Our art folks, I mean, are them connected with the Denos Museum? They're going to walk over there, do a tour of what exhibits are going on at Denos, how can our kids connect to that? And then the afternoon, they have a local artist coming in to talk about his craft, and then the teachers will think about, how could we infuse some of that? Our PE department has Munson coming in in the morning, working with some nutritionists and some kinesiologists, and like, what would that look like? Then they've got Patrick McManus in the afternoon, doing some safety stuff. You know, when you've got a PE class and you're outside and you've got forty kids, there's just different things that arise, so he's going to talk to them a lot about just some safety and tips there. Music, Chamelious is leading the music group, and they, he's got a presenter coming in for them, who's a phenomenal practitioner, and they're going to do some modeling on that. I think, who am I missing for secondary? Oh, world language, what?
World Language.
World Language is working with Danielle Bronstrom and our tech department, really on how do we record and provide feedback and do listening with all of the speaking and listening of world language and technology. Sometimes that tends to be a hard intersection for them to figure out and figure out in a way that is easy and efficient for their time, so Danielle's going to work with them on some of that stuff. And then Jamie Grants, I think, is going to do a little presentation too on some world language strategies that she's learned. So really cool, Dan and Brittany and I have worked really hard, now you guys will talk about elementary, on providing on Wednesday, subject-specific professional learning that we really think are. And all of it has come from ideas from the teacher leaders. This is what we're interested in, this is what we're, and then Brittany and I kind of worked on, okay, who would be people to bring in to infuse that day? So co-facilitated by our teacher leaders and an expert in that area for secondary.
Yeah, and then elementary, I'll, Brittany chime in, just that, the top picture you see there is Brittany organized, coaches, admin, and our pilot teachers together for a day. That's actually a monastery, that's another great space. And, you know, we talk about bond projects and kind of the secondary bonuses of these bond projects are these spaces that we have for professional development that happens to be our condition too. But Brittany, just the implementation she's done has just been fantastic about how thoughtful it is and step-by-step. So I'll have her talk about maybe this day in particular, because I thought this was just phenomenal. Just the idea of professional development, doesn't have to be six hours of sit and get, right? The professional development, professional learning should have embedded some time to digest the information during the learning itself, and then that work on planning with a team, which she did a great job of embedding in, in these days.
Yeah, so we spent the brief part of the morning kind of reorienting ourselves to the implementation plan and the role that pilot teachers have, and really emphasizing this is a collective kind of charge forward. We all play a role in the success, right? And so we kind of reviewed that, that was a review from the spring of last year. Then they had time within their grade-level teams, because they are going to be facilitating a fifteen-to-twenty-minute district launch before teachers engage in the initial training provided by Amplify reps, and really leveraging, you know, the why and the purpose and what this implementation means for us as a TCAP school district. And then they had time with their building leader, instructional coach, and pilot teachers to say, okay, how are we going to bring some of this learning back and connect it back to our building and our priorities within our buildings on that eight-twenty-eight building PD day? So just a really nice opportunity to kind of reset the stage and, and make the shift together before this week, but also, you know, what it means for them within their staff and their building, and really giving them the autonomy to make those connections with their pilot teachers and instructional coach in their building.
And the idea going back to meaningful and relevant, where we specifically have different groups, like our social workers have professional learning outside of CKLA. Jesse mentioned all those specials teachers have the opportunity. Last year, they were part of that Reading League training as a requirement for the grant. This year, those teachers have their own specific professional learning they're going to do, and the professional learning provided by Amplify that Brittany organized is grade-specific. So we have six different rooms with, we have all of our kindergarten teachers in one room, all of our JK in a room, all of our first grade. And that'll roll over, like Brittany said, on Thursday, the building can, the building has their own PD that they've kind of set space aside to see, after doing that professional learning, what's the next step? And then our STD day, we have them coming back again on November fifth, or the fourth, half-day by grade level again. After they had a chance to actually work in the curriculum, then they figure out what's next step with questions they have.
Are we, also, I hear about the advanced placement stuff. What are we doing? Is there anything that addresses the kids that have moved on but not particularly done well in the prior grade? The kids that are on shaky academic ground? The kids that are borderline on which edge of the proficiency line you're going to fall? Are we doing, because there's a fair number of kids.
Yeah, and that goes back to our tier-two structure, and we talk about either tier-two as far as pull-out groups, or, or we talk about tier-one, Brittany and I have talked a lot about tier-one remediation as far as pushing in the classroom. So those teachers that provide those tier-two supports are part of this training also for CKLA and part of the launch. That is definitely on our plate of kind of rebuilding what tier-two looks like. Because we've been doing tier-two now for, as far as a model of, especially for reading, I'm talking about elementary, we're getting there as far as math goes and building that. But for reading, we've been doing the same thing for several years, right? Where the idea of, they take a fall NWA test, they have a percentile they score, we create reading groups, we pull them out, we try to give them some more remediation. And honestly, I don't know if we've seen the immediate growth we'd like to see, right? The idea of that year after year, these, these kids are still not quite meeting grade-level proficiency.
Where they're on shaky ground.
Yeah, and that's.
And especially after summer.
Yeah, Brittany and I have talked a lot about that, about what that next step looks like once we have, you know, a research, research-based, I'll say, robust tier-one program for the first time in a long time, how much that'll help as far as that remediation that's actually needed.
And I'll just add that we're really trying to make this intentional shift to really focus our time and energy on prevention, because we know that that's going to have the most lasting impact, right?
Catching it early.
Exactly, and so how do we build on the systems and structures? We have an intervention already to make that a little bit better aligned to provide intervention, but really focusing time and energy on how do we prevent as much as possible so we can really actually start to see more of what we would expect to see in terms of like a multi-tiered systems of support with ten to fifteen percent of our student population getting those additional intensive supports. Right now, we have well beyond, I think, fifteen percent of our elementary student body and, and some buildings more than others that could require that additional tier-two support. And then throughout the course of this year, just to add to Dan in terms of the talking about the tier-two system and structures, I will be bringing together our interventionists at a district level six times throughout the course of this year. So how can we consistently and coherently build an intervention system that allows us to better intervene with our students and monitor the impact of that in a way that's a little bit more systematized? And so the first time they're going to meet together is on September ninth to start that work.
Because those kids are also in the general classroom, so they're trying to catch up at the same time they're moving ahead. And you're trying not to lose them in the process, you know? So those are the kids that I think we really need to put some focus on.
And those lists carry over from year to year, so those teachers know, the interventionists know, so those kids are very closely followed.
And I will say, in the secondary ones, all of them are about an hour is this launch and re-center and what the best practice looks like. And then the afternoon is, okay, how do we engage the reluctant kids, the apathetic students, the students who maybe don't have as much academic skills? How do we still get them engaged in the learning and what does that look like? So all, at least the four core at secondary have all expressed, we want to spend a good amount of time thinking about that chunk of students and how we can move them along too, so.
Because, yeah, you could easily be talking fifty percent or more of your kids.
Did you have any questions?
Nope.
No, okay.
Following up on this.
Sounds great. I just had a couple of questions, the, that last board about the high school teachers, are they looking at the goals for?
Yeah, those dates are wrong too, and I apologize about that. I was like, looking at that screen thinking, I thought I fixed this.
There's probably a template for that.
Sorry, I don't know. Yeah, it's actually really cool, we worked really hard this summer with Sophie, so all of the secondaries will get a pretty cool grid of all their kids' last year fall and spring scores, right? Looking at who grew, who didn't grow, what was the growth? In my classroom, more kids who are already at grade level, or kids who are slightly below, some reflection on why or why not. And then we'll reroster it in a week after student schedules kind of settle down, and they'll get, okay, here are my current rosters and how they performed last year to help them set some goals. How do I individually goal set with a kid? How do I goal-set with a group of kids? How do I use this information and grab some practice questions and write content range for those kids and do some of that? So I'm really excited, this is the first year we've actually been able to provide all that data to our secondary sites at all four sites, so.
So I know our, our strategic plan hasn't been, you know, the final version hasn't been adopted, but I was just wondering, with the new performance measures that have been drafted and revised for consideration as a full board tonight, are some of those trickling down to the building level?
Yeah, like, I, I looked at the middle school on Thursday, actually are doing their day together instead of at their sites, and Studeman's presentation I was looking at this weekend, she is using the same graphs, and she's got that eighth-grade target, because that's what the middle school, right? And then her discussion is, how do I, as a sixth-grade teacher, feed into this? How do I, as a seventh-grade teacher, how do I, as a science teacher, feed into this, right? And so they're, you know, that idea of bringing the ownership to everybody. She knows their, their tentative until the board agrees, but I felt like we were at least solid enough down the road that this is the time to put those in front of staff and start thinking about, what's my part in this, right?
About the art program at Denos Museum, that just triggered a question for me. And to what extent do we have a, a good partnership with Denos Museum or other artistic organizations? Like, there's the Elk Rapids Sculpture Garden, there's.
There's the one out at Interleaven Arts, right? They do some stuff out there, yeah. Yeah, really, Denos is probably our strongest connection, and this was the art teacher saying, hey, let's get over there now before the school year starts, let's figure out what all their exhibits for the whole year look like so we can know where things might tie in. And then they do have some scholarship programs for transportation and for tickets and things like that, that then we can, we can tap into. Obviously, Central High School is the easiest, because the kids can literally walk out the back doors and walk over, and they go over quite often. But I know that some of our other schools would like to get over there on, on a more regular basis. And then what they did for the afternoon was they gave me a list of local artists that whose work they just felt like would relate or translate well into classrooms. And so then I just started cold calling, asking who might want to come in, and we got a gentleman who's coming in, and he's going to spend some time showing, he's a professional artist, the art teacher's, what he does, what his genre is. I don't know if that's the right term, media. And, and then they're going to think about, he, he might come back to do like a guest speaker in some of the classes, he's willing to do that, like, or how could we morph some of his work into projects that we already do, so, yeah. And they've already got people lined up for RSTD Day two as well, the art department, you know, so.
All right, excellent. Yeah, and then just big picture, you know, I know we've got the calendar set with professional development days this year, but just in support of our new strategic plan, keep us posted on what your thoughts and needs are, you know, going forward for additional PD for growing our, our staff, because we want to help them succeed.
For sure.
Okay, thank you.
So we just wanted to put this back in front of you guys, make sure we're all on the same page about assessments. So what, the first slide here is the required assessments, I actually just copied this one off of, I think we talked about this in April. Last year at Board Curriculum, so this is, nothing has actually changed with required assessments. Although I'm I'm still like hoping that like maybe the work keys will go away, but.
Which one?
Work keys.
Oh, work keys, oh, yeah.
Like swings on and off, you don't know at the legislative level.
That's for our CTC students, right?
In all of our elementary.
Oh, okay.
CTC does give it as well, but.
That was one that you had said before you were advocating the state to drop, right? But.
And they're debating, they're, they always do about every two or three years, but it is back in conversation again.
I think the big thing for you for you guys to just take note of is that we do ELA in math, grades three through eleven in the spring, right? And three through seven do that ELA and math assessment through the M step. Once you start ninth grade, that ninth through eleventh grade does the ELA and math through that college board suite of PSAT, SAT. Depending on what grade level you're at, the benchmarks are different in eighth grade and ninth grade. If you're looking at thinking, oh, they take the same test, they do, but you have to score higher in ninth grade to reach that college readiness than you would in eighth grade. And it sort of scales that up. And then in those grades five, eight and eleven, that's when the students take an additional subject specific science or social studies M step. On top of the ELA and math. My access.
They do both.
Yeah, yep, yep. Well, in all those grades, you do both. My access is for our students who have significant cognitive disabilities, they're usually on, or they're not on a diploma track, they're on a assertive completion. Our WEDA is for all of our English language learners. And then we do have a requirement to do literacy assessments.
That is correct. Through our, that used to be read by third grade, now it's K twelve on literacy law. And that takes into account all of the conversation at the state level that is being had around dyslexia.
So testing schedule for this next year for secondary, no change for high school. High school has been, our nine through eleventh graders take it twice, once in October, once in April. That October is not required, we choose to do that. It's a one day test for the majority of our kids. We choose to do that because we get the scores back and kids then are in their college board account, they can see how they did, it connects to Khan's. So they can do targeted practice, parents know, really helps our kids who wanna go post-secondary think about what's realistic and where am I at? And where would I need to score in April to to set myself up? We do a lot of planning around that, both content wise and with kids and goals and things like that. So there's no change there at the high school. And then the middle school is the first where we have some change. So NWA, we're not gonna do in eighth grade this year, we're gonna just do that PSAT twice, so about October and April, just like the high schools do. Keep in mind in eighth grade, you still do the M step for science and social studies, just like in eleventh grade, that's why that's tacked on the end. And then our sixth and seventh grade will do NWA, reading and math twice. So October, give us the fall benchmark, where are our kids at, do some goal setting, some content setting. Do it again in February, help us see what the progress looks like. And then they've requested that their spring tests just be the M step as opposed to M step and NWA again, so.
Okay, so we are still testing three times for NWEA in sixth and seventh grade, right? What, hadn't there been a consideration of removing the middle one?
No, twice, just, so twice, so NWA would be the October and the February and May would be the M step. So they would test three times, yeah.
Okay, got it.
The middle schools really felt like this way they'll have some good baseline data, which they'll do stuff with, they'll kind of check in on progress at February. They'll make some adjustments they need to and then they'll do that final assessment in May. And they felt like that will give them a good amount of data leading into the year and I I agreed with them, I felt like that was them.
But the M step in the NWEA test, I I don't, differently, I mean, right, different content? So I'm just curious, cause at the beginning of the year, with that October NWEA test, you have that end of year target, if you're only testing in February.
This is the debate we had and what you get is the the tests are so close together, you get fatigue. And and when we sat and talked about, you know, from that standpoint, M steps the one mark that again is across the state. It's it's that norm, so we have to take it. So at that point, are you going to have kids do four tests? Like, we've always had this debate, you know, back and forth, you know, the timing just is not great the way it falls. And so we wanted to take a chance and just see, like, can we do better on the M step? Because we would always take NWA just before M step and and I can just tell you, you talk to kids, they're like, yeah, I I just, the second one, I, yeah, I was done.
Didn't even try.
Exactly. And so, you know, this is what, if we talk to teachers, we talk to principals, you know, I tell you, when Dan was at at East Middle School, like he pressed me hard, like we need to do this, we need to do this. But I had that same struggle, Josie, like from a progress monitoring standpoint, having those three gives you a steady. But yet then when we get to this, it's like, you know, so this is what everybody thought was the best way to try and go on it.
Another thing is I.
It's also a tremendous amount of time. That we're taking out of instruction to do both of those tests. And we really think that. Teachers are tired.
If we can do it like this, what we're seeing, like what we're hoping we'll do with the data on the backside is imagine a report that has a kid and has. There it'll be like a math and an ELA, so that's what they both test, right? And so you'll have a fall NWA, a mid-year NWA and an end of the year M step. And if we're gonna get enough data where we can make some predictors on kids who, okay, if I'm scoring this in the fall, this is most likely where I'm gonna land. And so what can we do to improve that outcome for that kid? It's kind of our our thinking on this and us being able to read that data and use that all throughout the year with teachers. This will help actually narrow the field a little bit for them on that.
Yeah, and I and I do remember the discussion we had earlier this year about it, so I'm not, I I get it, this has been a really years in the making.
We've debated this, yeah.
Discussion, I just, I guess, instead of February, what, you know, like, did you think about March or April?
We only get certain windows, NWA lets us take the test.
Yeah.
And so that's when that window is.
Yeah, I think.
The middle school principal said they wanted to stay off of January, cause some of our courses in middle school do have exams. They were thinking what's nice about February is it allows them time to make some adjustments before the M step windows open, which are April and May. Is when those open for our kids, so they were thinking that would give them some time to do that.
Yeah, we do have a district, so when we set the windows of NWA in the NWA server, there is as far as projected growth and percentile. It's depending how many days of instruction they have between tests. So we have to with them, with them moving a little bit in October and February, we're still September and January. We wanted to keep it somewhat as close as possible to create that window so that that growth projection could be accurate.
Okay, well, we'll see how it goes, right?
You know, this is interesting, over the weekend, I was reading an article, Texas is actually statewide looking at grades three through eight, I believe. Of going with either NWA or ISST as their state assessment. Progress monitored three times a year. And they they think they'll get the waiver from the federal government to do it. And so it's interesting, like, there are now states that are starting to go, rather than a one end date summative test. Of having a progress monitored state test that a metric is used by the federal government for all that meets, you know, the Elementary and Secondary Education Act. So it's gonna be interesting to see if our state considers that tide.
Yeah.
We do get most of our NWA paid back through the state, there's a requirement that we do progress monitoring and reading and math at least twice a year. The first one has to be within so many days of the school year starting, we have to provide parents with communications as to how their child did on the scores. And then the second one, it just has to be before the end of the school year. And all of our NWA testing that you see here meets all of those and so we do apply for some fee payback from the state. And we did get a nice, we got all of it paid for last year, I anticipate this.
And here's hoping that the state budget has it again.
Well, I'm hoping, I'm trying to be optimistic.
Yeah, well, just to wrap this up, I I wanna acknowledge that I think it's, you know, potentially a net positive. That we we give the kids less test anxiety, less test fatigue and teachers more time to teach. I just wanna make sure you all get the, and the teachers get the useful information they need throughout the school year, the kids are on track. And one thing I'll just add, you know, add about M step is from what I've heard from kids. And part of this is fatigue, but part of it is they think it doesn't matter. Like, they're excited when they get their NWEA scores, cause they see their own progress. They know PSA, they know SATs matter if they're college bound, but they're like, they get this message somehow that the M step doesn't matter. I don't know where that comes from, but they'll say like, the kids just fill in blanks. And blaze through that test, cause they don't think it matters for the district and it does, cause we record out on it, we're gonna be judged by that.
And that's a part of it is the setup the state has, I mean, our kids from last spring haven't even gotten their scores back. So I mean, even like your child who's high achieving, we're gonna hand him his score in about a month and he's gonna look at it and be like, what is this, right? Like, they took the tests.
Right, months ago.
Right, the parents.
The parents don't.
At least with NWA, they get immediate results and feedback and kids know, even with college board, they've got a nice, kids can track their progress over time and see how they've done. And they get that at a relative time, it's, the delay of the time is, it's it's a killer for us.
Maybe having a separation of time will help, but like just in terms of teachers messaging, like this is, this still matters. You know, this this gets published, our district, you know, is evaluated with these results, it still matters and, yeah. And next year's teacher gets your your M step scores. Gonna keep working on that one, you know, with the state.
Yes.
Okay, thank you, guys.
So for elementary, we did discuss specifically, this is winter, NWA is is the biggest change as far as no reading goes. So we, I started with building principals. And then I went to ELA and math leadership teams and we surveyed K five teachers just to get an idea of if you were to eliminate, we're not gonna eliminate fall. Fall NWA is too important as far as baseline for tier two and just where the kids are coming in, there's a lot of good data that comes out of our fall NWA. Winter was one with Brittany working with with schools and the addition of Ames Web and having a similar data or data that we can, we can monitor students. So to figure out in the winter in that second semester, how those tier two groups start to look and do we actually need a a winter reading to do that? We didn't think we did, so. Teachers came back at about seventy-five percent with okay, not doing the the winter reading. Math was a little lower than that, but they're all wanting to still continue to do the spring. That was probably our highest percentage for both. We talked about not doing the math also in the winter, but we just started that process of using Delta Math, that's our tier two for math in elementary schools. And doing our data meetings, so we wanted to keep that momentum and do one year, see how reading goes. And then figure out if the year after twenty-six, twenty-seven, if we also take math off the table for the winter. And like Sarah said, it it's testing fatigue, but it's also the fact that you're you're burning at least three to five days of instruction. And with our tier two, tier three special ed students, it could be up to two weeks of tier one instruction they're missing by having to take these tests. Because not only do you have the kids that, you know, it usually takes two days to complete the test, are all the kids done, who's absent? And so it flows into multiple days of disrupting the entire building's schedule to do makeups, like we dedicate a whole week to makeups also. And how we're gonna get several days of tier one instruction back now.
For basically a look in the rearview mirror. And driving your car with a rearview mirror is not always the best way to go.
I would, I agree with Dan, for some of our special ed students, testing is such a, it's just, it crushes them. Because these are the students who need instruction more than a lot of other students to close gaps. And yet instead of them taking one day for the assessment, they have double time or time and a half. And so now, instead of it being a one day test, it's a two or three day test. Well, when everybody's testing on the first day, that's fine, but on those other two days when they're pulled out to test, everybody else is moving on with instruction. And these kids are missing that, right? And it it's it's the kids that you don't wanna miss it even more. And so we do a lot of work about like, what does that instruction look like, could we do some supplemental stuff, right? So those kids aren't getting further behind, but it is is very tough for our kids who who have some type of accommodations to to test in a timeframe. That doesn't take a ton of instruction time.
Which is why when I was in that East Middle, that PSAT, you know, you have, it's what's a one dayer. You have all those tests on one day for for two to three hours and and then you you move past it on like M seven, NWA is.
So when we looked at this earlier in the year, it was late April, at that time you were thinking about moving the fifth grade NWEA math and reading. To the winter because the fifth graders take those four M step classes in the spring?
We did, we didn't get a lot of fifth grade teachers and admin wasn't real supportive of it. They feel that that spring is super important as far as kind of ending up the year and giving an accurate look at what the what the middle school needs.
So keeping that.
We're work in progress. I think, I just wanted to start somewhere as far as, cause I've heard for the last, you know, we're talking ten, twenty years about testing fatigue and we just keep adding tests. Is to start somewhere by taking one test away, seeing what we're missing, right? Maybe we're missing too much and we need to put it back in next year. But maybe continuing after after people feel comfortable not doing it and realizing that we still have the data to inform instruction. Can we, are there other opportunities to remove other assessments? And we should, you know, the thing I wanna point out here too is with the new CKLA, we should have common assessments across that are being done a part of that section. So that are consistent across grade levels, so we can have teachers, and I think this is work that Brittany and Dale do, of taking a look at within the curriculum, those assessments, both formative and summative. That are there to be able to say, okay, are our kids meeting the mark with that curriculum that I think we had varying levels of that with journeys, to be honest with you? You know, and I think we'll have some consistent assessment built into that during that middle period to be able to see if kids are having growth.
Well, your social studies and your math is gonna also focus heavily with reading. And so hopefully, you know, there's ways to piggyback everything together. Kids should be greater than the sum of all these individual parts, you know, so hopefully. I don't know, I I think testing has its place, but I hate to see so many eggs going in the testing basket, I really do. You either can use the material or you can't.
Okay, thank you.
This is just a a little FYI for the board and for you guys, just to know that we are really gonna do a push starting on September eighth. Which is intentionally that sort of that first Monday of the school year, but the second week of school. To really get out information to our families about our free and reduce forms and we're calling it a district campaign. We did have the free and reduce forms at all of our orientation and registrations, they'll be at all the open houses too. We also wanna be cognizant that a lot of times as we're kicking off the school year, parents focus, sometimes aren't on some of these other details. They're really just focused on getting their kids' schedule or meeting who the classroom teacher is. And so we're really gonna try for that week of September eighth and September fifteenth. We're gonna have a heavy communication in our school newsletters, which go out once a week, we're gonna do a press release during that. I've got an interview with the Record Eagle coming up today to do a story on that. Just whatever we can to encourage our families to fill out and complete that, make it as easy as possible. We're gonna send a link out as a standalone communication, so we've got that. It's it's more than just meals, right? Right now, we know that we have free meals through September for our students, we don't know until the state budget comes in on October first.
Maybe.
And then I, as to whether that'll continue or not, but this is also how we get some of our state and federal funding that we support our instructional staffing, materials, behavior support for students. It's also more than just meals for the families too, students who qualify for free and reduce get reduced athletic fees, they'll get reduced yearbooks, they'll get reduced tickets to dances. I mean, all of those things, so really working on trying to remove the stigma and saying like, hey, let's all do this as a community, even if you think you don't qualify. That's fine, we still want you to fill that out, we do get some of our funding just from having people fill the form out, which is very strange to me. But I'm not gonna try to understand state or federal funding, so.
Yeah.
Are there, sorry, are there still people, I know in the past they've had them at open houses helping to fill those forms out? Will those, is that still happening?
The technology team to make sure we have five, at least five kiosks at every, at every open house, so they can do the online. Posters were made with QR codes for open houses to try to get in front of this. Also, as far as, the online form is, Josie will fill it out, it's less than five minutes.
Yeah, you just, the biggest thing is once you get to the screen that looks like this, is knowing you have to click that apply for benefits and then it just walks you through it. It's super easy, I did it right on my phone and it took me, yeah.
You don't need an account as far as as our my meals go, you can just go right to that.
And this information, anything that you put in as far as your household income, all of that is secure, no. No administrator, as far as the building administrators don't get that, we don't get that here. That stays right, secure within our food service department, within actually two individuals who hold that information. So it's not, there's some apprehension in the past by parents of, I don't, I don't want building principals or my kid's classroom teacher to know that we don't, they don't, they don't know that at all. Nobody gets that information at, at school sites. Or even us in central office, or even Dr. Van Wagner, right? That really stays just with the people who, who need to, who need that for those.
I'm so glad you brought that up because I have heard that issue or that allegation that, you know, kids who qualify for free or reduced meals are somehow stigmatized. And I, I've asked and asked about that because if, you know, it's true, if it's true, it'd be a concern, right? But, yeah, I mean, you've just addressed that, so, thank you.
The thing that amazes me is the government, which receives taxes, income taxes, has databases that are enormous, needs another form to be completed to pull this information so that they can decide how to adjust some of the benefits coming back from the money. The whole thing is just beyond like.
Beth, I have a treasure trove of GIA reports you could read about and lack of coordination between federal agencies.
The problem is, is here we are asking for more information, creating another closet.
And another barrier.
And, and it just drives me nuts. The other thing is, I think there's a lot of time with information we already have, which includes the different educational plans that we have on kids. And also, we, we don't ask the question about single parent. And that kind of got shot down, although I was looking at data for the state and they were saying, and estimated, this was two years ago, over a third of the kids in the state are in single-parent households. Single-parent households aren't all about money. They're about time and attention and latchkey.
Absolutely.
It's a lot bigger than money. And that is where some of the pivotal points are in how well kids do in school.
Yeah, that's a good point.
And we're not looking there. So anyway, whatever.
Dr. Van Wagner, could you just do a quick summary of what happened last year when we did, well, the last two years, right? We've had free meals and what that did to fam, you know, families not filling out this form?
You know, essentially, what's happened is, is there's just been a misunderstanding of because this program was in place, that people didn't need to fill the forms out anymore. And the reality is, is that the numbers that are, are realized from the forms being filled out directly affects our state and federal funding grants. Our 31A funding, some of our title funding is based off of those numbers. And so while providing all of those meals, because people didn't think it was there anymore, actually lowered about a million dollars of, of funding that we'll get this next year because of people that could have qualified, would qualify under the program that didn't fill that out. And the amount of people just filling the form out period is a part of the equation that's used, that it hurt us to be able to actually give resources to our, our kids that, you know, are most at risk. So that's why we're really making a push on this regardless of how the state budget comes out. But it's really vitally important if the universal meals are not in the state budget. The only way that, to qualify for a free breakfast and lunch will be through qualifying under these forms to be filled out, so that's why it's really important.
And as a district, we have to hit a certain threshold of, of families filling out the form, right?
Correct.
Yeah, do you remember what that is?
Um, it just depends on the building. It's all depending on, so some buildings are considered CEP buildings and so they don't have as many. But essentially, you know, we, we are, our, our goal is to try and at least get fifty percent from that standpoint to, to feel that we've saturated from that standpoint.
And you talked to the state legislators last year, remember, about holding districts harmless?
Yeah, and we've been held harmless, but this year, we are not held harmless from it, from the state. And I had the same conversations with them about, can't you get this data from the IRS, from other resources? And they said, at this point, they can't, this is the only way. So, you know, we, we, we've been held harmless as that program's gone, they recognize it. Statewide, there's everything from seven to twenty-five percent of less forms have been filled out across school districts across states, so this is not just a decaf thing. We are seeing, interestingly enough, this year, we are seeing social media things from other districts that I've shared with the team. The districts all over the state are making this push because they're in the exact same situation as us. So I think our team's doing a great job of getting this message out. We're going to continue, we have posters that have been done, all of our building administrative assistants and building principals understand it well. So we're going to really, really make that push and try and get hundred percent of every one of our buildings. Is our goal to try and, and make sure that we have every resource we can.
Great, thank you.
So you'll see that on the social media and so anyone who's willing to share that and just spread the word that like, this is really good for all of our kids.
Regardless of income levels, we need the form. It helps us.
Yep.
Duly noted, for those of us on social media, we'll share.
And then I think our last photo here is just some of our student registration days, high school, middle school here. Look at those excited kids getting their Chromebooks.
And we're off.
Okay, well, just to wrap things up, regarding future learning series, I just, you know, want to reinforce to you three in particular how much I appreciate the learning series. I, I think they were launched maybe two years ago on the curriculum committee. And I think it's just really useful to help us trustees know what's going on in the district, be able to answer questions from, from students, from parents, even staff. So in the future, I just want to remind trustees that if you have any requests, special requests for topics, let me know. I will work with Dr. Van Wagner and, and Jessie and Dan to see what can work with your schedule. I want to respect your time, because I know you, it takes, it takes some planning time on your part and preparation time for these. And, and I, I really respect and appreciate that and also the sequencing, right? Because you have certain topics you want to cover at certain times of the year.
Yeah, and if you want to know, like, we're already thinking for the September one, we're hoping our M step data is public then. It's not yet, it's still embargoed, which we've been told repeatedly lately. We're hoping we'll be able to get that out to the community and to you guys on that September one. We're also on that September one thinking about bringing our English language learner teachers, our secondary lead and our elementary. We've re, rekindled that model of service to kids and that's a really important part of our community that I think you guys hear a lot about and they have specific needs. So we wanted to tell, talk to you guys a little bit about how we're supporting those. And then in October, at the end of the month, is our next one after that. And we've been thinking about doing an update on, here's kind of what fall academically looks like. At that point, we'll have our NWA window done. We will have like rolled through the first six to eight weeks of school. We will learn some stuff about who our, who our students are and where they're at, so. But we're always happy to take suggestions or give you guys a preview of topics too.
All right. And one more thing, I just want to give a shout out. This is probably just one example, but it's the one example I witnessed as a parent. West Senior High's back-to-school freshman parents session last week was really good. Well-attended at the West Senior High auditorium. I don't know what percentage of freshman parents attended, but it was, it seemed like it was a, a good number. And I just really appreciated how they emphasize grades and attendance and the cell phone policy for incoming, you know, high school parents. And, and I just really believe strongly that we've got to engage our parents. That's like a piece that is integral to student success. So I thought they just did a really good job and I'm sure that Central High School did something very similar. But that just is what I happened to witness. So with that, I will just announce that the next Board Curriculum Committee meeting will be Tuesday, September thirtieth, at our regular time of eight-thirty AM here at the Administration at Glen Loomis Building. And with that, we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.